We're live, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Doug. All right, folks, we're gonna have a public hearing today on the approval of conditional use permit 20-18 Burns RV site. Did I say that correct, Cindy?
Yes.
At this time, I will open up the public hearing. The way this is gonna work is we'll give a staff report. We'll get a presentation by the appellant. Then we get a presentation by the applicant. We'll take testimony from the public, and that's those are in favor of the appeal and committed, and those opposed the appeal. Remember the appeal. And the applicant is able to rebut, and the appellant is able to rebut. And we open it up, we have questions for either side, and then we'll close the public hearing and move from there. So at this time, I would ask if anyone on the board has a conflict or interest of interest or expertise? I do not.
I do not.
And I do not either. So at this time, we'll turn it over to staff.
Okay, the staff's part for the appeal of P&amp;Z Commission approval of conditional use permit application 20-18 Burns RV site. The appellant is Damon Carrick, the applicant is Gino, and Barbara Byrne. Thank you, Doug. The owner is Bob and Dolores Byrne Family Trust. The property is located at 12951 Patty Drive in Big Smoky subdivision number two, lot 32. On August 13th, 2020, the planning and zoning commission approved a conditional use permit for a recreational vehicle park to allow four RVs to be used as dwellings for more than 30 days in duration during the summer months. The campsite will be for personal use and will not have any commercial use. Water is hauled to the site, central sewer is used, and electrical power exists. The .24 acre site is addressed at 12951 Patty Drive. Access would be from Patty Drive, a public road. The planning and zoning commission questioned whether this was a grandfathered use since the site has been used in a similar manner for 10 years. Findings: Planning and zoning commission approved CUP 20-18 with conditions at a properly noticed public hearing on August 13th, 2020. An appeal was received in a timely manner on August 19th, 2020 with the appropriate fee. The appeal is attached. Issues being appealed are summarized as follows. One, and I'll go through those in just a minute. Okay, additional information received from the appellant on October 5th was a memorandum in opposition to the conditional use permit and applicable ordinances of Valley County. Those were received in addition to the appeal. And then, the appeal issues. Issue one: Planning and zoning commission did not utilize or create an accurate, meaningful site plan. Response: Planning and zoning commission decision was based on the site plan submitted by the applicant. They believed it was adequate. A new site plan has been submitted since the applicant moved the fire pit. Issue two: The CUP was granted without applying the setbacks required for a conditional use permit. Response: The commission decision was that the setbacks that should be applied were the same as for a single-family residential use and those for recreational vehicle campgrounds as follows: front and rear 20 feet and side seven and a half feet, which is also the same as for permanent RVs in Valley County Code 9-4-8A3. Setbacks would apply to uses including fire pits and RVs. Setbacks are only for structures over three feet in height. RVs are not permanent. Fire pits are under three feet in height. Valley County Code 9-1-10 states the following: setback: required distance between every structure and all lot lines on the lot which structures are located. Definition of structure: that which is built or constructed, an edifice or building of any kind or any piece of work artificially built up or composed of parts joined together in some definite manner. Valley County Code 9-53B1: setbacks. Setbacks for all structures exceeding three feet in height are specified herein. Issue three: The subject property is not owner-occupied. Response: The commission determined the property was family-owned. Gino Byrne's parents placed the property in a trust. He is the sole heir. The property has since been deeded from the trust to him. And that was attached, a quitclaim deed that was reported September 18th was attached, transferring the property ownership from the Byrne, Bob, and Dolores Family Trust to Barbara and Gino Byrne. Issue four: The commission's ruling violates allowed site density. Response: The commission determined there was no violation of site density. Site density allows 2.5 dwelling units per acre. There are no dwelling units. They're used for full living facilities or any on any sort of foundation. The use of RVs are for recreation. The RVs are removed prior to the winter months. Valley County Title 9-1-10 states the following, and I highlighted the applicable portions. It says it's for full living facilities, and it says mobile home, travel trailer, recreational vehicle, or preconstructed modular unit on a temporary foundation. Legal notice for the appeal was posted in the Star News on September 17th and September 24th. Potentially affected agencies were notified on September 18th. Neighbors within 300 feet of the property line and those who commented previously were notified by fact sheet sent September 8. The site was posted on September 23rd. The application was posted on the Valley County Public Hearing website on September 8th. Additional information: facts and conclusions. Attached to the facts and conclusions that were approved by the planning and zoning commission: part of the Valley County Board of Commissioners deliberation, decision should be a reasoned statement that explains the criteria and standards considered relevant, state the relevant facts relied upon, and explain the rationale for the decision based on applicable provisions of the comprehensive plan, relevant ordinance and statutory provisions, pertinent constitutional principles, and factual information contained in the record, all of which should be part of the motion to approve or deny, or should be developed with staff assistance for action at a subsequent meeting. The following are the conclusions of the planning and zoning commission: proposed uses in harmony with general purpose of the Valley County ordinances and policies and will not be otherwise detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare; that the proposed use is consistent with the Valley County comprehensive plan; Valley County is one mixed-use zone, performance-based planning which allows different uses adjacent to each other; that the use could be considered a grandfathered use since they have been using it in this manner for 10 years; but the RVs are removed each September. The RVC ordinance was not adopted until May of 2020. Jean Byrne is a qualified applicant and meets the intent of an owner-for-owner occupied requirements of a recreational vehicle campground. The setbacks will be the same as for a single-family residence even though there are no permanent structures. Maximum lot coverage for a single-family use or recreational vehicle campground is 35%. According to definition, Valley County Code 9-1, lot coverage is calculated for buildings. The use is less than 35% lot coverage. Valley County Code 9-5C6: density does not apply in this use. There are no permanent residences. Recreational vehicles are not on foundations of any sort. The application was complete. The minutes for the planning and zoning commission meeting held on August 13th, 2020 are attached for your review. The planning and zoning commission staff report was also attached, and it included all the other comments received for the planning and zoning public hearing. Applicants' response to the appeal: they submitted the quitclaim deed, reported to clarify ownership of the lot. They submitted the revised site plan showing the movement of the fire pit. And they showed a picture of the new fence on the property line that the planning and zoning commission had requested that they place to keep the kids off the other person's property. Agency comments received: Idaho Transportation Department does not anticipate any significant traffic impacting state highway system, and it has no objections to this proposal. Central District Health has no objections. Jess Ellis Donnelley Fire Department stated requirements for open burning fire rings and vegetation control. Public comments received after notice of the appeal: Lewis and Beverly Schumacher, 12965 Don Drive, believe that the amount of coverage on the lot was overlooked. Four RVs and a storage trailer plus vehicles is too much for the lot size. Other concerns include the fire pit, electrical hookup, and future handling of other lots with four or more RVs. Cindy's response to their question is included. And then, the following is the code that specifically applies to recreation business and private recreation uses, and I won't read those to you. One is for 9-1-10 dwelling unit, and one is a recreational vehicle campground. Compatibility: in summary, compatibility rating: the planning and zoning commission compatibility rating was a positive eight. The Board of County Commissioners should do their own compatibility rating prior to the meeting, and we attached a form for your use. Staff comments: Northlake Recreational Sewer and Water has historically assigned one dwelling unit per three RVs or equivalent dwelling units. This is the typical standard. Our ordinance does not make this finding. This three-to-one ratio is why we allowed the three RVs with just an administrative permit and required a conditional use permit for anything beyond that number. When the ordinance was amended in May of 2020, the matrix and private recreation use standards were not changed. The ordinance allows for recreational vehicle campgrounds as permitted. It was never determined what standards would be for uses beyond the three RVs, which require the conditional use permit versus the recreational uses that require increased setbacks. Setbacks are measured for buildings. RVs are not buildings. The same thought should be applied to the matrix. The planning and zoning commission determined mitigation of trees and placement of the RVs allow for the setbacks to be the same as residential recreational vehicle campgrounds instead of a required as for a private recreation campground, and I showed the comparison there out of the table. There were lots of attachments for your review. And then staff's, I mean, not staff's, planning and zoning commission, conditions of approval were: one, the application, the staff report, and the provisions of the land use and development ordinance are all made a part of this permit as if written in full herein. Two, the change in nature or scope of land use activities shall require an additional conditional use permit. Three, the use shall be established within one year of the date of approval. Four, the issuance of this permit, these conditions will not relieve the applicant complying with applicable county, state, or federal laws or regulations, or be construed as permission to operate in violation of these statute or regulation. Violation of these laws, regulations, or rules may be grounds for application of the conditional use permit or grounds for suspension of the conditional use permit. Five, all lights shall be fully shielded so that there is no upward or horizontal projection of lights. Six, noise shall be kept to a minimum after 10:00 p.m. Seven, shall have a fire extinguisher handy near the fire pit. Eight, cannot park in the public right-of-way or setback areas. Nine, shall move fire pit so it is not within setbacks. Ten, shall mark property lines. Eleven, shall quitclaim property within one year. Twelve, shall not rent site or RVs. Thirteen, all guests shall park on site. And fourteen, setbacks are 20 feet from the front rear property lines and seven and a half feet on both sides. That ends my staff report.
Okay, at this time, we'll ask questions for staff, and I have one Cindy right off the bat. It seems like most of the concern on this was the amount of coverage. Well, this, if I remember right, is a quarter acre lot? So theoretically, you could put as many campers on there as you want as long as you keep the setbacks front and side. I mean, is there a point when you say, okay, you gotta have an acre to have so many campers? You gotta have a half an acre, and you get this many campers? I can see living next to this where this, me, seems like it's getting pretty busy, pretty crowded. Am I wrong there?
.24 acres is 10,454 square feet. 35% of that is 3,659 square feet.
Okay.
There are four campers that are probably 10 by 40, so you're looking at
400.
1,600 square feet, maybe.
So they could actually double the amount of campers on there and still be okay?
Right. But the planning and zoning commission's point was lot coverage does not include RVs. Lot coverage includes buildings where building permits were issued, according to the definition of the Valley County Code.
So then theoretically, you could have eight RVs on this lot and still be okay?
Yeah. If they're 10 by 40 RVs.
Similar size.
Right.
Okay, any more questions for staff?
In regards to that, though, the septic, are they pulling campers off-site to go?
They're on sewer.
They're on sewer, so you really can't have that many because the three-to-one is one home for the sewer district. So really, by adding the fourth, we're expanding that to a four-bedroom home on a three-bedroom approval per septic.
Good point.
Or sewer. And so you can't just pull multiple homes on there without violating the Northlake Sewer.
So if we approve this for four, are we violating that standard?
No. We've noticed, Northlake, they have had no concerns with this. I mean, they've been hooked up to sewer for 10 years there for this use, but clarify that with them.
Yeah.
Yeah, Northlake had no concerns. Northlake lights, three RVs as an equivalent dwelling unit to one residence, but I know that there are a number of them out there that have four, I think before they made those recommendations. But that's what we based our ordinance on.
Okay.
For the three RVs. It wasn't anything besides that.
Any more questions for staff? If not, Mr. Carrick, are you here, sir? The appellant?
Yes, Mr. Commissioner.
Hey, welcome, sir. At this time, we'll
Thank you.
Take a presentation from you.
I appreciate that. Thank you. My name's David Carrick. My business address is P.O. Box 44 Caldwell. My wife and I own a couple of lots here in Big Smoky number two. And my parents bought the first lot in 1959. The two that we had, they bought in 1964, so we're very familiar with the neighborhood. And it's a beautiful place. And it's changed a lot since 1959, just because there's one more people up there that are being accommodated. The issue that we have with the staff is that we're reading with a statute and trying to apply the plain meaning to the ordinance, I mean. And I've tried to educate everybody as best I can with my thinking. I've submitted a memorandum for the county commissioners here. I've submitted an abstract section of the selected ordinances that apply. And I think the ordinance allows that you can have three recreational vehicles, up to three recreational vehicles. You have to go in and get an administrative permit for that, but you said the site plan and so forth. But if you want to have more, like four RVs, you have to apply for a conditional use permit. And the first problem that you confront is that there is a site density restriction that says that you can't have more than 2.5 dwelling units per acre for a conditional use permit. And the staff is arguing that recreational vehicles are not dwelling units, even though there's a definition for dwelling units that says home, travel trailers, recreational vehicles are all included in with the word dwelling unit, just like single-family is. And so then they go to this concept, I don't know, there's no support for it in the ordinances anywhere, but they say three RVs equals one dwelling unit. Well, okay, let's apply that. Let's say that you can have three times 2.5, that means you can have seven and a half of these RVs per acre. Well, we're on a quarter acre. You divide by four, that comes out less than two, so you're still restricted. It's just absolutely impossible under the law, under the ordinance, to have four RVs unless you go out and buy another lot or two, or move someplace where you've got a few acres. So that's the first problem we have. The next problem is that if you do allow for four and do give a conditional use permit, the setbacks become 30 on the front, 30 on the back, and 15 feet on each side. And the park, and the earlier site plans showed the RVs parked around the perimeter where they are presently, as far as we know, and clearly in the setback area. Now, if there's three or less, you are allowed the single-family residential setbacks of 20, 20, seven and a half, seven and a half. But in this case, they requested the fourth one, so the setback would be 30, 30, 15, 15. Well, the argument that we're having with the staff on this one is that setbacks don't apply to recreational vehicles. They only apply to structures. Yet the language of the ordinance that allows for these RV campgrounds says that none of the parking will be in the setbacks. And the argument of the staff is that you have to have vehicle parking, but a recreational vehicle is not a vehicle. So that's our objection. We're just encouraging the staff to adhere to the ordinance. The, whenever I file anything, then I get the response. And I noticed the response this time on my materials on the appeal, they said that there's a kind of a grandfather situation. And the, I don't know, you have kind of a grandfather. How that works, it seems to be either you've got to follow the ordinances, or if it's not following the ordinances, it would be a non-conforming use. And it would have to be either permitted under an ordinance or a statute, or some constitutional concept of, you know, taking property without due process of law and so forth. Well, let's analyze the facts. And it's nice, because there's no dispute about the facts. Barbara and Gino did not own the property until less than a month ago. And the prior order was the Bob and Dolores Byrne Family Trust. And Bob is deceased, and so Dolores was the trustee and the beneficiary, essentially the person that would have both laid on the beneficial ownership of the trust. And she doesn't own an RV. She's not, she's not up there. So what's happened is that you've got several friends and family that are permitted to bring their RVs up there free, gratis. And they say, in their materials, that they're only there from late May till late September, and that this year, they didn't even use all four of them at the same time. And they only use them like about five weekends. So really, what proprietary interest is there to be grandfathered? There's no ownership that predates September 18th when they were, became the owners of the property. And they can't acquire anything divorced because she was never up there, didn't have an RV up there. So I, you know, I'd like to see some briefing from the staff on how they consider this a grandfather, what they're relying on there. You know, if I had a big wake boat, and I was in McCall, I had a slip with a marina, and I enjoyed for years and years driving my wake boat around 50 feet from the shore. And then an ordinance is passed that says, no, I've got to observe the wake zone next to the shore. I don't have any, you know, it's just things are getting crowded. We have to comply with the new rules as they come along, unless, of course, we've got some kind of property right that we've established by our historic use, which is certainly not the case here. So I don't see how they can use more than, they have three, well, three recreational vehicles under the ordinances the way they are written. And then also, they have to have those, at least inside the single-family setbacks, or there's gotta be four, then they'd be in the conditional use for the 30, 30, 15, 15. And then they have two parking places for the vehicles for each recreational vehicle, which is also in an ordinance. And so that's it. I'm just trying to read the ordinances with their plain meaning, and I don't, I don't see how this is legally permitted.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Carrick. At this time, we'll take
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You bet. We'll take a presentation from the applicant. Is Mr. Byrne here? Come on up, pardon me?
Barbara.
Barbara, come on up to the mic. Please state your name and just your hometown.
Okay, my name is Barbara Byrne. I'm from Boise, Idaho.
And you can remove your mask if you want.
I'm high-risk, so I'll
That is fine.
Okay, thank you. My husband and myself, Gino and myself, we got the letter from Planning and Zoning stating that we need to either apply for a three RV permit, or if we wanted more than three RVs, we would need to apply for a conditional use permit. Well, we do occasionally have four RVs on our lot on Patty Drive in Donnelly. They belong to myself, and my husband have one. My son and his wife have one. My daughter and her husband have one. And my nephew and his wife occasionally have one up there. The three are the main that are usually there. This year, it has been used five times. One night, there were four up there. Actually, the fourth one this year was our, we have a little one we have at home that we use if we want to just go to it overnight or somewhere else. It was ours. We pulled it up, we pulled it home the next day. It did not stay except one night, and that was for my niece to use, so she didn't have to sleep in a tent since we had it. But this year, there has not, that was the only one night that it was all four were in use. Like I said, the other three were used five weekends this year. So we decided, instead of saying one of us can't use it, one of my family members, we said, well, let's get the conditional use permit so we can when we want to have four RVs on our property. We've been doing it for well over 10 years. The property was purchased by my father-in-law, Bob, I believe in '79. It's always been known that it was going to pass to us. It's just always been known. But then, when Bob passed away, Dolores got a phone call from somebody stating that we were breaking the law and that we could only have one RV, two. I don't know exactly what was said, but she didn't want to deal with it, so she said, let's quitclaim deed it over to you. Let's just get it done, which we've been meaning to do. We just never have. But now that this came up, we did a month ago. She is also high-risk. We really didn't want to take her out to get it notarized, but we did just to get that taken care of. So now it is in our name. Sorry. I said, we've only used it five weekends. Oh, and he did say that Bob and Dolores did not have an RV, but actually, they did use our RV when we weren't even up there. They would go up with us, or if Bob wanted to go up and go fishing, he would use our RV. I really don't want to go in too much detail because it was pretty much covered before. We are just using it for our personal use. No friends, just those four. We've never charged anybody. If anybody else has ever come up, like we, for the solar eclipse, we had a couple other family members come up. They came for the weekend, they left. We do have sewer. We're hooked up to sewer. We are hooked up to electricity. We did submit a new site plan following the setbacks determined by the planning and zoning committee. Everything will be out of the setbacks next spring. The RVs are all gone already, except my son's. His wife is a nurse, and she was exposed to COVID, so they were under quarantine. Luckily, her test came back negative, so he is coming up tomorrow and getting his. It has been pulled off the setback, so it's not on the setbacks now either. It's just waiting to be picked up. Like I said, we're just asking to be able to use our property for what we've been using it for, for 10 years, where we've never had a noise complaint. We're good neighbors. We mind our business. We're in bed by We're in bed by 10. Just want to go, use my property, and be happy. Thank you.
Being happy is pretty important.
Yeah.
I have a question for you. You said you were from Boise?
Yes.
How would you feel if someone moved four campers in next to your house in Boise?
Well, it wouldn't be allowed. I wouldn't ever buy a property where it was allowed. If I didn't want it next to me, I wouldn't buy a property where it was allowed.
So in other words, you wouldn't like it?
Um, depending on where I lived. If it was up in the mountains, and if they were living in it, but if they were using it five weekends out of a year, one night, maybe two nights in a row on a weekend, not bothering me, not having parties.
So which setbacks are you using?
The ones determined by the Planning and Zoning Committee.
So the seven and a half and the 20?
Yes, yes. We moved the fire pit. Like I said, we already have a site plan. We have the trees that need to be, come out before any RVs go up in the spring. It will all be done.
Is there a storage trailer on site?
There is a storage trailer. We have determined we do not need to take the storage trailer up. It takes up a lot of room. It has our side-by-side and our four-wheelers in it, but we do not need to have it there, and we will not have it there.
Okay. Any more questions for the applicant?
One more thing, as far as negating the parking issue. So I do understand parking issues, those are kind of tight-lipped. So how are you guys parking all of your vehicles?
There's a circle, the RVs or our personal vehicles when we go up, which, both. The RVs have set RV parking spots. They do have, a couple of them have to be moved, because they are not in the determined, or they are in the determined setbacks. So we have already mapped out the new site plan where they will not be in the setbacks. And we'll have to take out, I think, four trees, and-
What about your vehicle parking when there's-
There is, there is a circular drive, which has parking in it that is not on the setbacks, well, part, you know, partial.
So it's on your property?
On our property. Yes, there is, there is plenty of room on the property if we, when we follow the Planning and Zoning setbacks, there is plenty of parking spots.
So any more questions for the applicant? Okay, I think you can be seated. At this time, we're going to take public testimony. I would ask, do we have anybody on the phone that wants to testify? Hello?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I was trying to get off of mute. This is Jim Fleming, Chairman for Big Mountain.
Okay, Jim, are you a proponent of the appeal, uncommitted, or an opponent of the appeal?
The appeal itself doesn't bother me. It's all about the setbacks, it's what the debate's about, to be honest with you. That's basically where the debate is.
Okay, so then I'm going to bring you up in the uncommitted, when we get to the uncommitted. Is that all right?
That works for me.
Okay, thanks, Jim. So we'll start out with people that are a proponent of the appeal, people that like the appeal. Anybody in the audience? Last call. Okay, then let the record show that no one spoke as a proponent of the appeal. Now we'll go to the uncommitted, and Jim, you're up first.
Okay, so I was getting off the air. My name is Jim Fleming. I live at 12964 Sandy Drive, which is about four lots to the north of the Burns lot. And this one I'm bringing up to the committee is, you know, as a community, this was not about the approval of the RV parks, you know, to the point made, they own the property, they have the right to be on the property, but also with respect to others. And it's about why this ordinance was created, and establishing rules around the use of two, three, or more than four trailers on the residential lot. The ordinance was created to help control the use of trailers on lots. In the creation of those orders, setbacks were established based on the number of trailers. And it is these setbacks that are important to us as a community, because it allows enough distance between dwellings for safety, privacy, in some cases, environmental protection. My grandfather dwelling setbacks for the Burns property will set a precedent that could have far-reaching impact on our neighborhood and well, other neighborhoods in Valley County. Big Smoky II is not trying to penalize the Burns, but we are concerned about setting the precedents for the future. Big Smoky II is a 66-lot subdivision. Out of those 66 lots, 19 still have not been developed. With the high cost of housing and the small amount of resources to build in Valley County, the use of trailers provides an inexpensive alternative to owners. We ask that the committee take this into consideration when including the proposal. As an example, on September 10th, you approved two additional RV parks based on setbacks with dwellings. If the committee were to reverse its decision and implement the setbacks in accordance with the current ordinance, these two properties should not have an issue complying, as one was five acres, the other was .82. We would ask the committee to maintain the setbacks that were established by the new ordinance for more than four trailers, and help preserve our small community in comfortable living. So that's my input. Thank you.
So, so now, I want to make sure we're talking about the same setbacks that Jim is, we're talking about 20 from the front and back, and seven and a half on the sides?
Yes, that's-
No, we're talking about the 30, well, I'm talking about the 30, 30, or 15, 15, not the, not the single dwelling that you have at the minute.
Planning and zoning commission determined that we should use the single-family residential setbacks.
Which is seven and 20.
Which is 20 from the front and rear, seven and a half from the sides. The appellant and Mr. Fleming believed we should use private recreation setbacks.
And that was the 20 and the-
And that's the 30 and 15.
I just lost it. 30 and 50?
And they have consistently used the, the Planning and Zoning Commission has consistently used the 20 feet and the seven and a half. The appellant and the applicant would like, I mean, the appellant, oh. Excuse me. I don't want to misquote it. The appellant and Mr. Fleming would like them to use 50 feet from the front, 50 feet from the rear, and 30 feet from the side. And Planning and Zoning Commission-
The conditional use permit states 30 front and back, 15 on the side, not 50 and 30.
I'm sorry, that's what you're asking for.
Basically.
So where did the 15 come from? From RV campgrounds? That's what I'm trying to get straight in my head.
Okay. Let me look real quick. You can keep on taking testimony, and I'll clarify that-
But the 30 and 15 comes from anything for a conditional use permit. And the private recreation uses, which is 9-5-E-1-B, that's 50 feet in the front, 50 feet in the back, and 30 feet on each side. And that could be applicable, but I think here, where they're asking for a conditional use permit, at least they ought to observe the 30, 30, 15, 15.
For residential uses, the minimum setback is 30 front and rear, and side is 15.
Right, that's for residential. Planning and Zoning Commission believes they should use the 20, 20, and seven and a half. But if it's considered the private recreation, then it would be the 50, 50, and 30. So Planning and Zoning Commission, since when we adopted the new ordinance, we did not specify which setbacks. Planning and Zoning Commission has determined and has consistently used the 20, 20, and seven and a half, which are the same as for single-family residential. The recreational vehicle campground specifically states 20, 20, seven and a half. But this one additional RV kicks it up into needing a conditional use permit, and they would like to see the 30 and 15. Planning and Zoning Commission determined that it's the 20 and seven and a half. But the ordinance states that if you have a conditional use permit with four, no, it does not. It doesn't. Unless, Mr. Carrick, can show me where it says if you have a recreational vehicle campground with four units, that it, those are the setbacks.
No, I think-
It's on 9-4-8-A1. More than three units will require, require a conditional use permit. That's what puts you over into Chapter 5, Conditional Uses, which gets you to the 30, 30, 15, 15. 9-5-C, excuse me, 9-5-C3, minimum setbacks. All of this is in Title V, or Chapter 5, I guess it's called, which is conditional use. So you get out of the RVC, Chapter 4, when you have more than three units. More than three units will require a conditional use permit. Then that puts you over into Chapter 5.
Okay.
And that also puts you in with this density, which will limit you to 2.5 per acre.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask if there's anyone else that's uncommitted? Okay, then let the record show that we have no more of that. The next one will be testimony of people that are opposed to this appeal. People that support what is being opposed. Okay? Let the record show that anyone who opposed the appeal. So at this time, we'll let the applicant, which is Mr. Carrick, rebut. Oh, no, wait a minute. Which is Barbara. That's where I get confused. Rebuttal, anything you've heard so far?
I don't hear anything.
Okay. And then the next step is rebuttal by the appellant, Mr. Carrick. Do you have anything else you want to add?
Well, you were, you were kind enough to allow me to jump in there a time or two, so I think I've gotten my rebuttal. I would just encourage anybody who's interested to read my memorandum and the applicable ordinances. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, then, I'm going to, any questions for both the appellant and the applicant? No, nobody has any more? Then I guess I will close this public hearing, and we'll begin deliberations. Sid, I have a question for you. Under 9-1-10, definitions, you list mobile home, travel trailers, recreational vehicles, or pre-constructed modular units on a temporary foundation are as a dwelling unit?
But they have to be on a foundation, and they, which means the temporary foundation, these are RVs that they pull on and off.
Mobile home, travel trailer, recreational vehicle, which I'm assuming would be like a motorhome or a-
Or pre-constructed. On a temporary, you have to read the whole sentence, on a foundation.
On a temporary foundation.
I am, I am reading it, a mobile home, a travel trailer, a recreational vehicle, or a modular unit on a foundation. Not all of them on a temporary foundation.
That's the way I read it, too. It's wording there.
And the Planning and Zoning Commission did not consider these, this dwelling units. They're recreation uses, they're not dwelling units. But how do they, how do they get away from saying they're not a dwelling unit? It says travel trailer.
Because they read it, that, on foundations, on temporary foundations. Because you wouldn't put a modular home on just a temporary foundation.
You wouldn't put a travel trailer or a recreational vehicle on a temporary foundation.
Well, some people put them on a foundation and put some skirting around them. I don't think you'd put a manufactured home on a temporary foundation, though. These are not permanent, they can pull them on and off.
Personally, I need to read these ordinances before I make a decision. I'm not ready to make a decision. I need to read this more in depth. To me, that temporary foundation only applies to a pre-constructed, pre-construct modular unit, and I think it changes the entire complexity of this conversation. So I apologize. I'm not ready to make that.
Well, if, if we're going to interpret it as that, read it like that, then none of these, RVC ordinance, everything, would be disallowed on a lot of lots. You couldn't even leave the administrative permits.
I think the issue I have, Cindy, is you have the definition of a dwelling unit. Why would these even be in there? You, all you would put is a module, pre-constructed modular unit on a temporary foundation. You wouldn't have the mobile home, the travel trailer, that wouldn't even be considered in the definition of a dwelling unit.
There's a lot of people living in those dwelling units, though.
I mean, it shouldn't even be on here if that's not a dwelling unit, is what I'm trying to say.
Which meets the above, which meets the above criteria. Which provides for living facilities, living facilities, not recreational use, living facilities. You have to, that whole sentence says, on a temporary foundation, which meets the above criteria. And that is, it may be a single building or part thereof, which provides for the full living facilities of one or more persons. These aren't living facilities, that can't be, they're RVs.
Well, in this situation, but we are setting precedents for the future? And if somebody were to hook these on lots and allow people to live in them, I mean, this is, this is only for recreations, they only use it five times. However, we have to define this, and people could definitely be living in these for at least nine months a year.
We're only looking at the site-specific application. If we need to make ordinance changes, then we need to make ordinance changes.
I understand that.
State statute doesn't allow you to live in an RV year-round.
I know state statute doesn't, however, a lot of people are.
Right. And I'm just, you know-
The reality on the ground is.
The other issue I had was the grandfathered issue. Because they're taking them off every year, how can that be grandfathered?
That's why PND said that they couldn't just grandfather them in, even though the use is the same every year, and it's a grant, it could be considered a grandfathered use. They were more comfortable approving the CUP for the four recreational vehicles than just making it a grandfathered use because of longevity.
Okay.
The use has been there over 10 years. It's just-
And the ownership change doesn't bother me at all, I don't advocate that.
If it states in the family, it doesn't bother me, but if it's sold to somebody else, it's different.
Yes, I agree.
Dave, what's your desire?
I go either way on making the decision today, but I do think there's some clarification needed on the setbacks. Because the way I read it, too, is it seems like it reverts over to the private recreation.
Which would be the 50 and 30, not the 30 and 15 that the appellant thinks. So I mean, there, there's a lot of ambiguity, which the Planning and Zoning clarified during their public hearing, is the way that was handled. Because when we did this, we didn't say anything more than three RVs is going to require increased setbacks. So the Planning and Zoning Commission thought, well, there's just one more RV above the 20, 20, and seven and a half with the RVC, so we'll just apply that setback to this.
So it sounds like we have, we do have an ordinance change to clarify if there are setback changes.
Well, we could get more specific in Title V, because the ones that he's quoting is for residential uses, not for recreational vehicles.
And I agree with that.
It all depends upon if you're thinking of RVs as residential uses, or if you're thinking of them as recreational vehicles. Are they recreational vehicles that people camp in periodically, or are they residential uses? If they're residential uses, then clearly, clearly it's 30 and 15. But these were not considered as residential uses by the Planning and Zoning Commission. They were considered as recreational vehicles.
So the biggest hiccup is that one statement on whether the temporary foundations apply to RVs or to travel trailers.
What is our, what is our actual, for the applicant, what is the definition of a dwelling unit?
Well, that's what, this is the descriptive unit of measure for determining residential use and density.
Page 5 and 6, on the C, on the appeal.
It may be a single building or part thereof. So a building or part thereof which provides for full living facilities of one or more persons includes, single-family detached, single-family attached with, or clustered multi-unit components such as duplex or condominium, or multiple-home travel trailer, recreational vehicle, or pre-constructed modular unit on a temporary foundation, which meets the above criteria, which is full living facilities for one or more persons.
So if they were to pour a slab of concrete and park the motorhome on it, is that a foundation?
And skirt it and put up a structure? I would consider that permanent living.
So is there any way to clarify, so if this family decided they were going to make this their permanent residence, and all of them moved in, then it would change the ordinance? So is there anything within that ordinance that restricts the amount- So is there anything within that ordinance that restricts the amount of use they can have?
Well, if they're going to make these living facilities instead of recreational vehicle campgrounds, I, they would have to have a conditional use permit for multiple residential units on the same parcel. You know?
So that would make a difference to me.
And we have that going on now, a lot of the fifth wheels that are brought up here and skirted and people live in them in the wintertime on city sewer and water. But how many can you put on a parcel? It depends mainly on the size of the parcel, which is where the Benson thing comes in.
Right, but if they're put on the temporary foundations or foundations, you know, if they're put on that, none of these RVs have any skirting.
So I think what the, I mean, the issue is here is the fact that these are not, uh, living units. That's where the rub is. I mean, if they came up and actually lived in these for six months, it would drive the conversation differently than if they're coming up, everyone's going to bring their family to camp on, as a camp lot. But I don't know that our, we, we definitely need to look at that ordinance, make sure that that's defined correctly, because that is happening all over the valley. People are using these things as dwelling units.
And some of them, re-ranging them out to construction workers throughout the construction season.
And we're going after those. We, we've got close to a hundred RVC permits in.
Really?
Yes. And, you know, you can't rent those out. So we're trying to get those people to apply for conditional use permits for commercial uses. Not for residential uses that need a CUP. We're considering those at commercial use, like an RV, um, park.
Campground, a park, yeah.
An RV park versus an RV campground. Planning and zoning commission thought this was like an RV campground with an additional RV. And this was the first one they looked at.
Well, fortunately, we have a hard enough winter up here that most folks end up pretty disgraced living in one of these through February and March.
So, you know, and I'm just trying to be the layson between the P and Z commission and the board. If we need to clarify our ordinance, we need to do that.
Well, my concern is if this was five or six RVs.
Well, that would be considered five or six RVs. This is four. This is a site-specific application, this is not five or six.
I just wonder if we could do this on a, on a, the, the size of the lot determines how many campers you can have on.
Well, this sewer is really what drives that conversation. I mean, Northlake Sewer should be telling us this is too much for our sewer hookup. If it's any more units than this, I would say four is probably a maximum.
And we give them notice on all these.
Yeah.
We just wait for the responses.
It's a four-bedroom, four-bath at this time, which is typical family units up here on, on one septic or sewer hookup. But I guess the difference is the RVC, which is what we're looking at, the recreational vehicle campground is including placement of parcels for single-family residential uses established, but it is specifically for the recreational use of a parcel by friends and family and not livability, which is what the dwelling unit calls out for up top. My concern though, so if we allow a CUP on this and allow four of them, and all of a sudden their kids decide they want to make these permanent residents, how do we monitor that? How do we say you have to have a CUP now for, for a full-time residency?
Well, you put that as a condition of approval.
Okay.
I mean, they have to follow the application as presented. I mean, they've clearly stated that they only come up on weekends or, you know, probably a week here or there. Um, but if they change the nature or the scope of the land use, then they need to apply for an additional conditional use permit. That's already a condition of approval.
And that would actually then change. If these are going to be lived in for longer than weekend use, that changes the setback requirements on these to be the larger setback.
Yes.
So if someone is living in them full-time, that goes to the thirty and the fifteen, if not larger setbacks. So because these are recreational use only.
Cindy, you know, does this subdivision have any covenants?
I don't know. Um, Mr. Fleming said that he was the president of the HOA.
We can't enforce that anymore.
I've, I don't know, I didn't read him.
Mr. Fleming, are you still on?
This is, we have a, we have an architectural committee, but not a...
You have an architectural committee, but no covenants. Is that what you said?
Correct, that is, that is fired, yes, that is out.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, so there are no CCNRs.
Okay, so what do you want to do? You want to table this and talk about it, or do you want to make a decision now?
I was looking to see if I did get anything from Northlake. I mean, we talked to Northlake all the time. And they are perfectly aware of our RVC efforts out there. They're right on board with us.
So if we put that, um, any continual continuous days of people living in these would change the use and a CUP would be required every month. So these are camp lots.
How long are you going to go, six months?
No.
A year?
For longer than thirty days. Somebody lives in them continuously for longer than, continuously for longer than thirty days, it is a living situation and changes the use.
Which would kick them into an RV campground.
Then it would put it into a dwelling unit, then it would be a dwelling unit.
Go on, okay.
And that would require greater setbacks and higher or less density requirement.
Cindy, this, on the, on the, it says approval of CUP. This has already been approved, so this is an appeal of that CUP, correct?
Right.
So we have to either approve or disapprove the appeal.
Yeah, you either have to deny the appeal or approve the appeal. Um, and, you know, another thing that the planning and zoning commission was pretty, I mean, what they keep talking about during these is, you know, because it's all new this summer, is they would rather see these campers parked on-site through the week instead of being pulled up and down one hundred fifty-five every weekend.
I agree twelve thousand percent on that.
Yeah, I don't mind them being parked on-site, but if somebody's living there for longer than thirty days, then it does change the use.
What about if, like, the parents live there and the kids came periodically? I, and I'm just trying to clarify, so we have a very specific...
I think if anyone is living there for longer than thirty days, it changes the dwelling use. That's my...
Okay.
I agree. So then you want to make a motion then to deny the appeal with the following condition. State the condition, and then we can go on and be done with it.
I would go to, um, deny the appeal of CUP.
Go with twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen, with the condition that if someone lives on-site for longer than thirty continuous days, it changes the underlying use and a new CUP will be required as a dwelling unit.
I'll second that. Babe, move to second, any more discussion? My only concern about that condition is, well, I went to Boise one weekend and spent the weekend down there, so I wasn't in it for thirty days. We're going to get those kind of appeals, but I think you're intent, so it's good.
Well, it's just this one, this doesn't apply to everybody, this is just this one.
And this gives us ideas on what we need to change and how we need to change.
Babe, move to the second, any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, the appeal is denied. You guys are okay? I think you understand the parameters?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
I would work very closely with your neighbors.
I would love to.
Right.
I'm a good neighbor, really I am.
Okay, thank you folks that are on the phone too. Okay, we're going to move on to our next public hearing. This is a denial of conditional use permit twenty twenty, The Gathering Place. Um, does anyone on the board have any ex parte or conflict of interest?
I do not.
I do not either. So at this time, we'll take the staff report.
Okay, the staff report for the appeal of the P and Z commission denial of conditional use permit application twenty dash twenty, The Gathering Place. Um, the applicant, appellant is Brent and Ann Peterson. The site is fifty-two Nob Hill Drive in Nob Hill Estate, subdivision two, lots three and four. Valley County adopted ordinance twenty dash ten, short-term rentals with an effective date of May eighteenth, twenty twenty. On August thirteenth, twenty twenty, the planning and zoning commission denied a conditional use permit for an event venue. The applicant had requested the home and property be used for short-term rentals and events. A maximum of thirty-six overnight guests was requested with the use of ten S and RVs. There are thirty parking spaces on the property. No parking would occur on Nob Hill Drive. Proposed quiet hours were ten PM to eight AM. Electricity, propane, septic system, and well existed the site. No additional structures were requested. Access is from the existing driveway of Nob Hill Drive, a public road. The five-point-seven acre site is addressed at fifty-two Nob Hill Drive. Planning and zoning commission denied CUP twenty dash twenty, The Gathering Place, at a properly noted public hearing on August thirteenth, twenty twenty. An appeal was received in a timely manner on August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, with the appropriate fee. The appeal is attached for your review. Um, and I'll review, uh, the responses here, that appeal and the responses shortly. Additional information received from the appellant was dated September twenty-eighth, and that was all the recommendations from McCall Fire Chief have been completed. As, that's what the applicant states. Requests clarification if Valley County is going to mandate all vacation rental homes over twelve-person occupancy be required to install automatic sprinkler systems and responses to the P and Z commission conclusions. And I also received another letter, uh, this one dated October ninth, and I believe you all received a copy of it electronically, um, from the applicant, appellant. Um, so the appeal. Issue one, the applicant has and will continue to make changes to meet concerns of Central District Health, McCall Fire Department, and neighbors. Response, letters of approval will be required from Central District Health and McCall Fire Department, Valley County Building Department. Issue two, this is the first application for a short-term rental conditional use permit and requirements such as for automatic fire suppression need clarified. Response, the commission decision was for the site-specific use and size occupancy of the structure. Issue three, the applicant is willing to reduce the maximum occupancy number. Uh, the response, the commission determined that the number of occupants proposed was incompatible with the neighborhood. An appropriate number, maybe twelve, is allowed by a permitted use meeting an administrative permit. Legal notice for the appeal was posted in the Star News on September seventeenth and September twenty-fourth. Potentially affected agencies were notified on September ninth. Neighbors within three hundred feet of the property line and those who commented previously were notified by fax sheets sent September ninth. The site was posted on September twenty-third, and the application was posted on the Valley County Public Hearing website on September ninth. Additional information received, fax conclusions, um, attached to the fax conclusions that were approved by the planning and zoning commission. Um, uh, I describe how you need to come to a decision. The following are the conclusions of the planning and zoning commission. The proposed use is not in harmony with the general purpose of the Valley County ordinances and policies and will be otherwise detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. The proposed use is not consistent with the Valley County Comprehensive Plan. Valley County is one mixed-use zone, performance-based planning, which allows different uses adjacent to each other if they are compatible. This use is not compatible with surrounding land uses. The original building permit issued nineteen ninety-one was for a four-bedroom home. The home currently has nine bedrooms. No building permits were issued for the conversion. The septic system is inadequate, no plan for compliance was submitted. There are fire department violations and concerns, no acceptable plan for compliance was submitted. Nob Hill Drive is not constructed for this amount of traffic and the intersection of Highway fifty-five and Nob Hill Drive are unsafe and difficult to traverse in the winter due to the sharp turn at the ingress egress point. Noise from large gatherings cannot be mitigated. The house sits on top of a large hill and travels three hundred sixty degrees for miles. The home is for sale and should not be sold as anything other than a single-family residence. The home is advertised as sleeping forty-eight people, asking for, for permission to allow thirty-six people sleeping accommodations. This number of people changes the use from a residential use to a more of a motel, hotel, lodge, commercial use. Idaho Code sixty-seven dash sixty-five thirty-nine allows adoption of reusable regulations as it deems necessary to safeguard the public health, safety, and general welfare in order to protect the integrity of residential neighborhoods. Valley County adopted ordinance twenty dash ten, which was effective May eighteenth, twenty twenty. Ordinance twenty dash ten limits the number of people to twelve unless a conditional use permit is, is issued, which is based upon mitigation of impacts to the neighborhood. Compliance with lighting standards was undetermined since applicant's response was they were the same as established in nineteen ninety-one. Since nineteen ninety-one, a dark sky lighting ordinance of two thousand and four has been adopted and amended that requires updated lighting. The minutes from the planning and zoning commission meeting held on August thirteenth were attached. Planning and zoning commission staff report was attached for review and included all the comments we had received at that point. Agency comments received, and that Derek, Valley County Building official has denied a building permit application for bedrooms in the garage that has already been constructed. The septic approval is only for four bedrooms, not the existing nine bedrooms in the structure. No building permits were issued for conversion to a nine-bedroom structure. Central District Health replied to the appeal notice. Once an occupancy level is determined, the applicant will need to contact Central District Health to see if they can approve a septic system large enough to accommodate the proposed use. If the use will be something other than a short-term rental, an event center, there will be additional information required by Central District Health and possible public water system requirements by the Department of Environmental Quality. Central District Health sent a letter dated August twenty-seventh to the owners regarding non-compliance on the current use of the property. Property is currently on a septic system for a four-bedroom home or maximum of eight people. The septic system was permitted and installed in nineteen ninety-one. The home is being advertised as a short-term rental home of nine bedrooms and five bathrooms and can sleep a total of forty-eight people. The Valley County assessor site, assessor's site indicates that this is a four-bedroom home. Increasing the number of bedrooms in a home without obtaining a septic installation permit to accommodate the increased flows and utilizing the home as a rental that exceeds the design capacity of the septic system is in violation of ADAPA fifty-eight dash oh-one dash oh-three rules for individual subsurface sewage disposal. Central District Health recommends denial of this proposal. That was at P and Z level, July ninth. Derek Young, McCall Fire Chief responded with a list of recommendations, and that was dated July twenty-third. That was in the P and Z staff report. Um, he states the home appears to sleep forty-eight people, speaks to change classification, needs a thousand gallons of water for one hour for fire protection, needs automatic sprinklers, some bedrooms accommodate ten people, this should be limited. Interconnected smoke detectors have been abandoned and need to be repaired. A few egress doors do not open or are difficult to open. Need to comply with the LPG ordinance, needs fire extinguishers, and there are uncovered electrical outlets. The parking plan is needed so emergency vehicles have access. Public comments received after notice of the appeal. Proponents of the appeal of the P and Z approval are as follows, none. Opponents of the appeal of the P and Z approval of CUP twelve dash twelve, and I'll summarize the comments that we picked out of those letting in, celebrations, church, and corporate retreats. Commercial use is denied by the CCNRs. Use has been denied and approved by Central District Health, Fire Department, P and Z, and the neighbors. The site is approved for a four-bedroom septic. State law sixty-three dash eighteen oh-three specifically excludes from the definition of short-term rental any unit that is used for any retail, restaurant, banquet space, event center, or, and other similar uses. For four-plus years, the owner has ignored code and complaints. Infrastructure was not built for thirty-six-plus people, um, including water, septic, parking, electrical, plumbing, fire, road maintenance, et cetera. The use does not fit the single-family and agricultural area. Opposition due to the loud noise generated by large numbers of people at the site, which is a high point in elevation for several miles in any direction. This use does not conform to the character of the neighborhood. The past and current use does upset the neighbors. This is a residential neighborhood where nearly all other homes are occupied by full-time residents. The house is currently for sale as a five, five-bedroom home. The property management company does not respond to neighbors' complaints. The septic overload would create unacceptable impacts on the existing groundwater basin and at nearby down gradient wells. It appears that Mr. Peterson purchases property to rent for maximum return with no consideration for the impact on the existing neighborhood. Over a hundred signatures in opposition. The people who live in the single-family residential subdivision in close proximity to the site expect a quiet and peaceful existence. The people that submitted letters were, aside from the, um, the list was, uh... The people that submitted letters were, aside from the, um, the list, was Bill Borg, Ann Carr, Joe Weiss, April and Cory Whitney, Joe Murphy, Linda Paul Thompson, Shirley Hicks, John Beckman, John Hicks, Kelly Philbin, Bob and Maggie Gamble, Melanie Kennel, the Delunis, Clay Bradfield, Catherine Roth, Jeffrey and Catherine Roth, Scott and Connie Hines, Nikki Humphries, Bonnie and Todd Thompson, Sherry and Ennio Avalon, Pete and Mara White, Sally Nutt, Mike Weiss, Donna and Cece Lojek, Kristen and Larry Fiorentina, Karen Borg, Jill Cassell, John Humphries, and Christine Mann. Physical characteristics of the site: It's a single-family residence, and our building is on a hilltop that slopes down to Knob Hill Drive. Surrounding uses are single-family residential and agricultural, but to the west you have CUP twelve-dash-ten, McCall Donnelly School District Transportation Facility. That's a couple lots over. And the proposal is categorized under five commercial uses: Sea Service Business and Recreation Business. Short-term rental or vacation rental means any, and this is the review of Title IX, Chapter Five. Short-term rental or vacation rental means any individually or collectively owned, single-family house or dwelling in it, or any unit or group of units in a condo, cooperative, or timeshare, or owner-occupied residential home that is offered for a fee for thirty days or less. Short-term rental or vacation rental does not include units that are used for any retail, restaurant, banquet, space event, hotel, motel-type lodging, or other similar use. This does not include multiple family groups that are camping on holiday-type of weekends. That's Valley County Code Title Nine dash one dash ten. And we allow one short-term rental per parcel. Planning and zoning commission compatibility rating was a negative three. I have no comments. And then I listed conditions of approval. If you decide that you're going to overturn the approval, do you feel the need that I should read all those?
Nope.
And since that was completed, we received a letter dated October seventh from Larry Sheikh. You all received a light-panic version of this. So you can accept that into the record if you choose. I don't know if you want to choose to accept that. And I also received a letter dated today from a, uh, Robin Slight, I think the name is. Yes, Robin Slight. I don't know if you want to receive those. They were forwarded to you if you chose to accept them into the record.
Um, I don't have an issue with taking more into the record. We haven't closed the public hearing, so that's fine with me. But most of them in opposition?
It's just a two.
Just two?
Yes. And you have copies if you want to take a quick look at the essentials today.
Okay.
And that ends my staff report.
Cindy, who is the appellate?
The appellate is Brent and Ann Peterson, the applicant. They were also the applicants.
Well, this is a difficult one, isn't it?
Yeah. They're the applicants. P&amp;Z denied the CUP.
So this is-
And they appealed the denial.
So this is an appeal of their denial?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so at this time then, Brent, if you guys want to come up, state your name for the record, the town you live in, and we'll let you give a presentation.
Great, thank you. Brent Peterson, Namba. First of all, thanks to the Valley County Commissioners for your time today. With our application, I realized that night that in our initial application to P&amp;Z, there were some factors that could have been more clear about, specifically the work we had done in regard to complying with the Fire Chief and other work we've done with CDH. And so, that was probably my fault that I didn't, wasn't as clear about the work and our intention, and to this point, we have then complied with all the requirements for the Fire Chief. Also, Michael Zino and I have a plan in place with CDH that depending on the size of occupancy that's allowed, we will work to make compliance all septic. And also with the building codes, we've been working with Annette over there, and we'll make sure that those rooms, we have a good plan in place to make sure those rooms that I thought were initially under code can be coded pretty simply. So again, we recognize that safety is a big issue. We plan to comply with all the requirements from those, the issues that present itself. I would say we've been running for four and a half years and had zero safety issues to this point, but again, we want to be very clear. I think part of the rationale, as I understand it, for this compliance was for safety, and so we have all those things taken care of. To clarify a couple things, our plans are not to have an event venue there. It is true, the very first year, we did have one wedding there, and that caused some issues, and that was twenty sixteen. We have not had many, or ever plan to have any events. Again, to clarify that. And also, just so you're clear, when we became brought in this process, we immediately dropped our advertising with just twelve people. It could be some language below. That number is higher. We only rented twelve guests, starting when we entered this process, so we didn't just ignore that issue there. The issue is, we want to work with our neighbors to continue to hear concerns and mitigate issues. To be honest, over four and a half years, we have had very little communication with our neighbors to know of concerns. Our property management company estimates we've had six to seven phone calls over those four and a half years. Several of them, we did have some issues. A couple of times, there was too much trash next to the bin, and so that was unacceptable, and a few noise issues. Those are something that we want to keep working with our neighbors to make sure to mitigate those concerns. We do have quiet hours posted throughout the home to make sure, again, that we're observing all those rules and to try to be as good as neighbors we can be. I think the issue and a question is, I know this is a new ordinance, and so precedents are important, and so I think part of my question is more an issue of fairness and equity on how this ordinance is being enforced. According to my count, there are between thirty to forty short-term rentals in Valley County, not counting McCall, currently over twelve. And I am just not aware of other CUPs that have gone forward or have even been notified. So I think, I'm just curious, especially when they're, the claim, the concern of planning and zoning is this doesn't meet Valley County Comprehensive Plan. I think the challenge becomes what makes for good site compatibility? How is that determined? What's the rubric that's going to be used to make that, to make that judgment? I think that's the hard part, is how you decide what becomes a compatible versus a non-compatible part. And again, I think there are, again, over thirty to forty short-term rentals over twelve currently in Valley County. I'm not sure where they are in that process. I would also say that we are very open. As thirty-six is too high, will we have, I mean, we are open to negotiate that down to a better suitable number for you and for potential neighbors as well. So, we're not stuck on that, and within that number, we then comply with whatever CDH requirements are. Be very welcome to have the Fire Chief come on out and have the building inspector make sure everything is up to code and all those avenues. So, those are mostly the grounds of the appeal, mostly looking for kind of equity and fairness in regard to houses being compared to other short-term rentals in Valley County. So, thank you very much.
Okay. Yes, questions for you?
Oh, yes, sir.
On the second bullet point on the opponent, the commercial use is denied by the CCNRs. Did you know that when you bought that house?
I did not receive a copy of those, and it is our legal opinion that is not, we are not violating CCNRs.
Okay.
That House Supreme Court has ruled on a similar issue like this, and we're pretty confident that this is not violation.
The next question I had is, it looks to me like there was around, um, twenty-eight, twenty-nine folks of all your neighbors that are opposed to this. How do you feel about that?
To be honest, we had not had much communication with them before. A few of them had my contact information, so obviously, and they're a tight group, and we want to work with them and mitigate any concerns that they would raise up. And so, to be honest, it was probably a lack of communication, so we can do a better job creating an avenue as concerns arise. But to be honest, we didn't know there were issues largely. Again, my property management company has, I think they fielded six to eight calls over four and a half years, and we want to eliminate all those. I, we've had better communication. My closest neighbor, in this summer, he had a question that someone was making a loud noise after ten, so we looked into that. Other, another person was there, had a drone, they had questions over that. So, we didn't even prove that even this summer, and so we want to do the best we can. To be honest, we didn't know that the neighbors had the concerns until this process came about, and so we wanted to work with them, make ourselves and most of my property management company available to hear any concerns as they develop.
So, since you have owned the property, it was built as a four-bedroom.
Yes.
Who would improve it to a nine-bedroom without building a four-bedroom?
So, we just converted rooms from a media room, and actually, the previous owners are using bedrooms. In the initial plans, there were a media room we converted to a bedroom, and also in office spaces, we converted to bedrooms as well. And those were actually the uses that had been used for the last fifteen, twenty years of the previous owner. The one new addition was in the garage, and that's where we, I thought, our, I thought that the contractor had got it, Kobe had not, so we were working with Annette, and we saw that actually there is an area violation. We either closed the door off, should create a hallway. Actually, know the McCall Building Permit Inspector, and he recommended a couple of simple solutions that will make that come into play. So basically, we converted what was media and office space rooms into bedrooms, and they fit the IRC guidelines.
So, they do have inverse reverse windows?
Yes, they do. Yeah, they're fully compliant with IRC, and again, we're happy to have the building components come out and inspect and make sure there are any issues, we'll be, and we'll make changes, be compliant with those as well. So, we did add on the building, other than the fact that we did convert one side of the garage, and then we did learn that actually you're not allowed to have a door go right into a garage. We don't use it as a motor garage. We use it for storage. We'll be happy to rectify that, be happy to the building inspector, so, to come make any changes or any code violations they find, for sure.
So, when you made those changes, how many bathrooms were added?
Um, we just added one bathroom.
And did you know that Central District Health, that you would not meet the health requirements?
Uh, we did not know that, no. We're not aware.
And when were you made aware?
Um, this summer in this process is when we were informed that having, the home initially was not permitted for more bedrooms than what we were advertising as. That was the first indication we had of any issues. We haven't had any problems with our septic in the four and a half years at the forty-eight rate, but we'll, now that we know of that, we're happy to work with them right away to make sure, and Michael Zino has been very helpful, and we'll work to help permit that and find help with the construction to get there, yeah.
Okay, any more questions for the appellate? And in this case, the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if not, then we're going to take public testimony. You can sit down. Thanks, Brent. Is there anyone on the phone that wants to testify on this? I haven't heard anybody.
Yes.
Okay, would you-
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, can you state your name, please?
Sure, Kristen Fiorentino.
Kristen, are you for or against the appeal?
Uh, against the appeal.
Okay, so we're going to wait for you until the end, so just hang on, okay?
Perfect.
Thank you. So at this time, I'll take testimony from proponents of the appeal, people in favor of the appeal. So Kristen, now, I think, yep, I messed up. Kristen, it would be your, go ahead. We have one up the stand, then I'll pick you next.
Um, hi, my name is Kelly Hill, and I live in McCall at seven ninety Sheila Lane. I am the property manager for the Gathering Place, and I agree with everything that obviously Brent has said, but also that I know that there has been stated that we have not been responsive to neighborhood complaints, and I don't, I'm not aware of any time that we've never returned a call or answered the call, and like, again, Brent has said, that we have had, in my knowledge, six calls total, and a handful of those were because of the trash. It wasn't necessarily a noise issue. So considering we've been in operation for four and a half years, we felt that things were going pretty well up to this point, and I'm also, I'm here to understand, I guess, the basis that was used to deny this as this is going to affect other units that I have, homes that are in Valley County that don't fall under the McCall City ordinance and that are over twelve. I mean, we have reduced those down to the twelve, but if, should they decide to increase their numbers, I would like to understand, you know, what qualifies them to be in harmony with the neighborhood and the other reasons that were used to deny this applicant.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that is a proponent of this appeal? Is there anyone else that is uncommitted? Please let the record show there's no one uncommitted, so now we'll take testimony of those opposing this appeal, and Kelly, you're up first, or Kristen, you're up first.
Okay, thank you. Kristen Fiorentino, first of all, thank you so much for addressing the issue of short-term rentals and the nuisance that causes to those existing residential properties nearby. My input is a combination of personal input, and it also reflects neighbors who reside in the Knob Hill Estates, the Knob Hill Number Two subdivision and Carefree subdivision. As you already know, there's a petition about the business to the CUP, with over a hundred signatures. So many people have been affected by this. Carefree, Knob Hill Estates, and Knob Hill Two all have CCNRs, as you know, that prohibit commercial activity and any kind of activity that's not for owner-residential use. As existing residents, our properties were chosen accordingly because this is what we wanted, when we chose the property, and we've all lived in respect of our neighbors and of these rules. That is, the Hill fifty-two Knob Hill was old, and the new owners began renting it as a large gathering place and an event center, and this has resulted in egregious disturbance of the surrounding residents, spending all the way out to us. Activity at fifty-two Knob Hill, as you know, is in violation of the covenants that were in place prior to the owner's purchase of the property. They have sent legal notice to pieces of disquieting, as they operate in violation of the covenants in our subdivision. We are also grateful for county regulations that are now in place regarding rentals, as we have the same goal, which is maintain the residential nature of our subdivision. Fifty-two Knob Hill has been advertised as an event center and squeezing up to forty-eight individuals. This is parallel hotel occupancy numbers. Two requirements are not met, currently registered great people. I know you all know all that. Foul language, trash, heavy vehicles, a bit of routine, disturbing our weekends, disturbing our evenings, disturbing the reason we're there, which is for fatigue and quiet. There's a visible permanent dumpster. The renters violate the Valley County noise ordinances. Moreful calls have been made to the sheriff by surrounding neighbors. We have seen frat house-like parties during micron retreat weddings, we hours in the morning, and generally disrespectful, boisterous, and foul language renters. Property is abusive to all the surrounding properties. This includes over twenty-five immediate homes with year-round residence. The peace has been disturbed. Property owners do not appreciate that the owners put an expectation on us to police their property and notify them of problems. The trap record shows a lack of responsiveness to make changes based on prior complaints to the owner and the property management company. I doubt that they are aware of all of the sheriff's phone calls that have been made by neighbors. Quite frankly, by the time there is a complaint, the surrounding residents have already had to tolerate another episode of a nuisance. We do not want to mitigate continued issues on a property that violates the rights of neighbors, and is in clear violation of the covenants that protect their property. Our legal counsel has advised us that because we have had pre-existing covenants, the state rental law does not apply. That law allows for short-term rentals. The key here is that our covenants were pre-existing since nineteen seventy-eight and in perpetuity, and they've been available on the Ameritidal website since we bought our property, which is prior to the sale of the fifty-two Knob Hill property. So, we stand firm support of denial of the CUP for this address, and I'll reiterate that in neighborhoods, we expect neighbors to respect each other's enjoyment of property. It's sad that people knowingly violate existing rules that were designed to protect all residents, when people cannot be respectful in their own and honor the rules that apply to their property. We need to help local government. We're therefore grateful to the Commission for designing rules to regulate short-term rentals. We hope that because of this, we may again enjoy our property, and we hope that the integrity of our residential neighborhood will be preserved. Thank you for all the time and effort you've put forth in addressing this issue.
Thank you, Christine.
Can I ask a really quick question?
Thank you.
Sure, we have a question for you.
Christine, do you have an HOA in place that is enforcing your CCNRs?
Yeah, a Property Owners Association, we do.
Okay.
Is there anyone else that is opposed to this appeal, wish to speak? Come on up to the mic. Please state your name and your hometown. We don't need your address.
Is there anyone else on the phone?
Hmm? I'll ask her as soon as she gets done. Go ahead.
Hi there. My name is Ann Carr. I live in McCall. My address is one four zero two three Hydeaway Court in McCall, and I didn't plan to talk today, but when I got here and I saw this courtroom so empty of friends and faces that I know are against this, I decided I had to speak up. When I'm not playing golf in the summer or skiing in the winter, I take an hour-long walk through my neighborhood, and I have covered from Rogers Lane north to Samson Trail and from fifty-five- and from 55, Highway 55, all the way till you fall into the river to the east. And I know all those streets, like every pothole and all of them. I know people that live there, I know their dogs, I give all the dogs treats and I've gotten to know a lot of people. So three CUPs ago, um, when I found out that Cody Monroe wanted to do something that the neighbors didn't want to do, I said, well, I got, uh, the email addresses of a few people. So I became the one that sent out a notice to a few people. And suddenly I got all these other people calling me and saying, put my name on your list, put my name on your list. I now have 80 people that are opposed to the kinds of things that these people want to do in our neighborhood. We live in a residential neighborhood, not a commercial neighborhood. We're not next to Highway 55. And it just amazes me that somebody would buy a four-bedroom house and turn it into a nine-bedroom house and not know, he's got to get a building permit and then he's got to do fire things and, and, and all kinds of things he's got to do to that house. That's the kind of stuff, if I were going to buy a house and turn it into a resident, you know, a gathering place, I'd go find out from everybody that had anything to do with it, the fire people, the permit people, the county people, I'd say, what, and I'd look at my CCNRs. And it sounds like he did, but he figured out a way to sneak around them. But he said the Supreme Court, it's been the Supreme Court. Okay, well, so it seems, it sounds like his intention was never to, to abide by them in the first place. Anyway, what I want you to do, when you look at me, is to see 80 people sitting out here in this room who were opposed to this, because I've heard from almost every single one of them, they didn't come down here today because they hope I would and I'd talk to y'all and, and speak for them. But you got 80 mad neighbors, then if he continues to do this, then I've just lost faith in our government.
Okay, thank you, Ann. Anyone else? Come on up to the mic.
Uh, my name is Larry Shake, I live at 1612 South Sampson Trail in McCall.
You do not need an introduction.
I'm sorry. I, you know, and I, and I don't want to be here anymore and you guys want to be there either. Um, you know, I, I wrote a letter and, and I wrote a letter earlier on and, you know, this is kind of redundant for me because I want to explain to you that having meetings at two o'clock on Monday afternoon isn't conducive to bringing people out. And I, I don't know how you deal with that, but you know, you, even on the phone, I mean, most of the people that are, that are involved in this whole process can't be here. And I know that there was one appellate a time or two ago that said, we're, we're just old folks and we don't have anything else to do with our time than to come down here to P&amp;Z. Well, folks, I have a really sick wife and I, and I have to take time away from her to come down here and I don't like to be here. But I, but I'm really passionate about this process that, that pits neighbors against neighbors. I'm of the opinion that P&amp;Z especially, and maybe at the county commissioners level too, if, if we just took this stand in the very beginning of saying, bring us a proposal that doesn't have any conflicts and we can get this thing done, would require the proponent, the applicant, to work out all the problems instead of taking them on as you guys or for the P&amp;Z commissioners to try to figure out. Where our process just automatically means that if you're a bully, you can come up and push your way through into a neighborhood and, and get your approval because nobody's required them to solve their problems before they bring them for appeal or for approval. So if we just took this step, it would be great for these, these, uh, these short-term rentals too, because one of the problems we have in our neighborhood is, is that the short-term rentals have eaten up all the rentals in town, so we don't have places for our workers to stay. Well, if we just had a statement that says, short-term rentals have to have approval of their neighborhood, those short-term rentals wouldn't be happening. They'd have to move out, away from the, the towns into the rural countrysides and stuff, or else they'd have to have approval by their neighbors. Be real simple process if somebody got turned down, because then everybody realized, well, we're not going to get approval because the neighbors don't want us here. And really, we don't want industrial, commercial stuff to come into our neighborhoods because it grows like a, a, a cancer and it continues to grow. And so, please, don't approve this. The neighborhood for four years has been putting up with this. I, I've managed a condominium plant complex, I've managed a ski area, I've managed houses on the lake. And, you know, the property managers do the best they can, but they don't find out until after the fact. They show up at the place and the, and the house has been tore down, but they couldn't have dealt with it. The people move off and go off back to their homes out of town and so there's never any recourse or retraining. You know, once you have a, a, a short-term rental, the, the people work behind your back to bring in events that you didn't know you were going to have. Or, you know, in, in McCall, they rent the big house on the lake and four or five houses off the lake and everybody plays on the lake. It's the biggest house and the property manager doesn't know that. And there's really no way to respond to it till after the fact. So there's just out of control kinds of things that impact the neighborhood. And I appreciate your time, I'll get out of your hair. But I think with just a little bit of difference in the way we approach the planning and zoning and how much emphasis we put on the neighborhood input, we'd have a lot less problems. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Larry. Okay, come on up, sir.
I'm Joe Weiss, I live about half mile to the east of this property. And, let's see, I'm, I'm the one who has codified the ELT rule. The ELT rule being, does, does it piss off the neighbors?
It pisses off the neighbors.
Um, the appellant lives in Nampa. And yet he states he wants to be a good neighbor. And I'm not really clear how you can be a good neighbor when you live in Nampa. A good neighbor probably doesn't wait for the fire department, the water department, the sewer people, the people who have fire codes for access and egress and so on, to say, you did it wrong, before he says, oh, I'll make those changes because I want to be a good neighbor. That's not the way good neighbors work, if in fact he is a neighbor, which he's not. The second thing is, is the property manager says, well, I haven't received any complaints, I've only received two or three complaints. Well, when there's something to complain about, do you try to figure out who the property manager is and then call them, or do you call the sheriff? You have no idea who the, I still don't know who the property manager is, the name of her, her company or anything. I wouldn't know who to call, certainly nobody else does. So that, that's why she hasn't received any complaints, is because nobody knows who the hell to call. Um, and then the big point that I want to make, this is a four-bedroom house that was illegally converted into a nine-bedroom house. I don't believe the, the commissioners can be a party to approving bad behavior for a residence that shouldn't even be there in the first place. If you say, oh, okay, we can do this, you're saying, oh, okay, well, it's okay to flout whatever rules, regulations there are and we'll just ignore it. You can't do that. That's what I have to say in addition to the letter I wrote.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you very much. Anyone else on the phone or in the audience that is an opponent of this appeal? Come on up to the mic, just your name and hometown, please.
Hi, I'm Karen Borg and I live in McCall, across the street from the property we're talking about today. Um, it's very clear, there's only two proponents for this project. Mr. Peterson and his management company. Um, for four and a half years, they've made a great profit at that house. A little sneaky with a nine-bedroom, not approved, four-bedroom septic system. He claims that this property is rented out about 41% of the time. That was in his original documents. That's about 150 days every year. The RBO, one of the sites he advertises on, says that the average rate, average nightly rate for that property is $841. Now we understand why he is so serious about keeping this business alive. He says yes and everybody else says no. I say no. Our CCNRs say no. No commercial use that invites the public to our street. CDH said no. The fire department said no. P&amp;Z said no, because they took the time and read every neighborhood letter and petition that was sent. Nob Hill Estates says no. And to the point that, um, Commissioner had mentioned, we have a brand-new HOA developed this summer based on this product, trying to get these kinds of activities off of our street. We don't want them ever again. Mr. Peterson actually voted me in as one of those members and Kristen, who you heard on the phone already. So no, we haven't quite got all the neighbors together, but we're working on it. We want to stop this stuff. Carefree subdivision sent in a letter, um, and all the surrounding neighbors say no. There are two petitions total for almost 200 people who have said, please do not allow this to continue. There's also 47 letters or emails sent to you and the P&amp;Z commission to stop this. Lots of detail. Even Mr. Peterson understands what I'm talking about. My husband and I were the only two that attended his required CUP neighborhood meeting. On July 10th, exactly two weeks after the meeting, he sent me an email and said he heard my concerns and comments and he, and, um, I don't know if it's his wife or his management company, have decided to pursue other options and put the house on the market to sell. And he had every intention of selling it. And I hope that's true and I hope he really does sell it. Unfortunately, it's still on the market. Hasn't sold, but it continues to be advertised and rented without a permit. Doesn't sound like everything's up to code yet. When questioned why he's still doing this, he says he has until January 1st to comply to this ordinance. And that doesn't make any sense to me. I've spoken to Cindy directly about this and she said, no, it's in effect right now. Please deny CUP 2020 once and for all, give us our neighborhood back. We are not complainers, we are not whiners, and we're not going to keep complaining when we get no results. All future calls, we'll just have to go to the sheriff's department until you give us something else to do with this. Please deny him. Thank you.
Karen? Okay, thank you. Anyone else on the phone or in the audience that is an opponent to this appeal? Okay, so then we're going to come back and let the appellate rebut.
Thank you. Again, I would say, um, in the Carefree subdivision, there are also several VRBOs besides my own that are currently active there. I'd also say again, um, the sheriff never contacted us and I am apologizing that we've had issues that we haven't heard about. So it's an issue we want to work to be better about, for sure. Um, again, it's hard to respond to problems if we don't know about them. We want to do a better job communicating. Let's see, our closest neighbors did have a property management company because they were able to make those calls over those years. Um, and the HOA was not active until this summer, uh, and I think that's fine to go forward. Um, and so again, I, I want to communicate our desire to come up the code in all things. Um, and that we're happy to work with neighbors moving forward. And again, we want to do the best we can to communicate and to mitigate concerns as they arise. That's our desire. And again, I, I'm a problem solver. When there are problems, I want to work with neighbors to help alleviate those and give them avenues of recourse to be able, when a problem might arise, to be able to deal with that. So again, I'm, I'm not turning a cold ear to neighbors. Um, we do want to address concerns as they arise. And now that we made aware of some issues that we need to work on, and we've solved all the issues we can at this point regarding the fire code and CDH will be complied with. And also the, the permitting for those bedrooms, we'll be happy that they follow IRC guidelines. Happy to have folks come and check those out. If there are issues, we'll be happy to make those in compliance. And to make them both safe in the best we can to mitigate any neighbor concerns. So I want to be clear that I, we didn't know that there was this much frustration and so we're happy to work with those. These are our closest neighbors in particular, to deal with any issue that might arise going forward. That's our, our pledge, so thank you very much.
Mr. Peterson, I have one question for you.
Yeah?
So you're asking for 36 overnight guests with the use of tents and RVs?
Yeah, no, so clarify that, um, we, we're happy to not allow tents to occur and we never will expand upon that 36 total with the use of tents or RVs. Occasionally, a family of say 20 would go and say, hey, the kids want to be in a tent outside as part of their 20. We would never use tents or RVs to expand that number if it was decided that the neighbors didn't like it or, or you didn't like any tents at all. We'd be happy to not have any tents at all. That's not, um, that's not necessary, but we'd never use tents and RVs to increase whatever maximum you'd set before us.
All right, at this time?
I have one more question.
Okay.
So you have stated that you have complied with all of the fire district requirements? So those requirements included sprinklers?
So that was the question?
Yeah, I was going to go with a minute.
Right, so that was the question that I had in regard to the appeal, is clarifying on that issue. It is our, um, understanding that no short-term rental has been required to have automatic suppression system required. And so it's issue of fairness, that that's going to be required for all rentals in Valley County, we'll be happy to comply. But that was the one question we have not yet done, that was what Cindy said eloquently earlier, being clarification, if you're going to require all short-term rentals over 12 to have that system, other people are doing that, we'll be happy to comply as long as that's evenly mandated for everyone has to have that same system. So that, that's the one issue that we have not complied with, we wanted your clarification if you're going to require that in our, all short-term rentals over 12. Yeah, to be clear.
My concern is, we've had people that have been hurt up here in the last year. This had interconnected smoke detectors that were abandoned?
So we currently have, if you look at my, my recent application, those are all up and working now. We have eight or nine interconnected smoke detectors, they're all at the home with carbon oxide.
What do you feel was your responsibility while you had guessed that for the last four years? Smoke detectors are a pretty important fire safety issue.
Yeah, we've had, we've had smoke detectors and carbon oxide all throughout the home. We, we, basically they weren't interconnected, so that was the piece that we did add. But they, we've always had carbon oxide and always had smoke alarms in all the rooms and all the, all, all the code. What he wanted was also just want interconnected and we, um, we were happy to comply with that as well. And we actually have done so already, so there, we've done that, we did a compliance. So just to be clear, yeah, that, that addition was not that we didn't have carbon oxide or smoke alarms. We've had, currently, we had up to nine. Currently, we have more than that now. Um, we actually added an extra fire extinguisher over what he requested. Um, but the new piece that we did not have was the interconnected, um, because it's just one single thing, but we've been interconnected now. Um, it's a really cool system where one goes off in one room and it's heard all throughout the, well, in, not only loud, one is loud, like a 95 decibels. Those same alarms go off all throughout the house and will tell you, uh, basement problem, carbon oxide a problem. So it alerts every room that those are at.
Got it.
Yeah, there. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And that was, to be honest, I wasn't as clear and helpful to the P&amp;Z commission about that work that was done or planned to be done. And I know they had concerns about that, um, fulfilling all the, all the fire code issues. And so that was my, my error, that I wasn't as clear as I needed to be. I apologize for that on that P&amp;Z hearing.
Okay, any more questions for the appellate?
Yeah.
Okay, what do you got?
In the interest of being a good neighbor, would you be willing to give me your and your?
Absolutely.
Phone number and email addresses, because I'm going to send them to 80 people.
Okay, absolutely. We, we, yeah, we, we want folks to find a way to be able to contact us, for sure.
If you're willing to?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we'd be happy to share that, for sure. Yep, of course.
All right, I think that's it. Brent, if you want to sit down, I think this time we will, if there's no more questions, I will close the public hearing and begin deliberations. Who wants to go first?
I'll be happy to go first. You know, I, I think this is a slam dunk for me, I agree 100% with what Mr. Weiss said. To be honest with you, there's been a history of disregard for the neighbors and the laws of Valley County. This is not a, a vacation rental property, this is a hotel. You would not run it like a hotel. You're advertising it still on VRBO, which I pulled up when we were talking, as a nine-bedroom house that sleeps 12, but it comes up under a search for 20 guests. So again, flagrant in my mind, disregard for what we've talked about. You, I believe earlier said that you'd taken that off and had it down to 12 people. Um, you know, in my mind, I don't think there's anything that you can do to mitigate the effects of this. You can bring it up to code and turn it into a hotel with the correct firefighting and septic systems installed, but... But again, I don't see any way that you can mitigate the problem that this size facility is going to have in the residential neighborhood.
Sure.
So when we passed the latest ordinance, twelve was an acceptable number because that fit into a neighborhood field. I mean, twelve would be something that a family may have within a home, four-bedroom, three-bath home. And I am concerned with the flagrant disregard for health and safety up until this point, the last four years of this property. I'll be honest with you, I've heard about this property numerous times, and I don't live anywhere near it. And so there has been flagrant disregard for your neighborhood, and that concerns me greatly. You know, when you want to be a good neighbor, you reach out to your neighbors, you ask how it's going. And that would be something that I think short-term rentals in the future should be able to integrate into their neighborhood. They should communicate with their neighbors. Their neighbors should know how to get a hold of the management companies. You know, I understand the concern. Most of these places are ones that when there is a concern, I pick up the phone and call the cops too. So I think it would be incumbent upon anyone that wants to do short-term rentals to make sure that those cards for the management company are right there on site. You know, if you want to come back for a proposal with twelve, I would like to see how you have mitigated all of the issues with your building permits, the septic system, because after this type of use, your septic system is probably, quote, "not working." I mean, it would have had that much use in the future. I'm a home builder, and I understand septic. So it's, my concern would be, you know, I mean, when you come back, I would like to see all of this stuff done and mitigated, and then request that use, and not try and ask us to approve something and say, we're going to fix it in the future. That really is important. That would be my feedback.
Hey. It's my turn. I'm going to agree with Dave on this one. I think this is the use that's in the wrong area. The subdivision had CCNRs way back in the seventies. Maybe they didn't mean to enforce. Maybe they took a little bit too long to put the hammer down on this. But like Sherry, I have gotten tons and tons and tons of comments about your facility, Mr. Peterson. I don't think this is an appropriate use in the middle of a nice, quiet neighborhood. I think, like Dave, that you kind of flaunted the rules and the regs and thought some things in there that are not kosher. And I don't feel like we should continue with the use. It's a four-bedroom house. It's permitted for four-bedroom folks. I think that's as far as you can go with this thing. And whether you sell it or rent it, you know, as a long-term rental, I think that's fine and dandy, but as a VRBO, I think we need to cease and desist immediately. So I'm going to make the motion that we
May I clarify this stuff?
Sure.
This was proposed as an event center, or something that would accommodate thirty-six guests. That would be a commercial use. Whereas a short-term rental is a permitted use for up to twelve guests. And they just have to get the administrative permits. So if this is denied, they can get the short-term rental permit for a maximum of twelve guests under our Valley County Code as allowed by state statutes.
Even though it's a commercial use, and there's
It's not a commercial use. It's a short-term rental, which is allowed by state statutes. I also want to clarify, however, that the CCNRs are in place, and those CCNRs do have some legislative intent, as long as they're being enforced financially. And we'll let the HOA take care of that. But we, as a county, will approve a short-term rental for up to twelve guests if they have approval from Central District Health, take care of their garbage, and all those other things that we put into our ordinance. Anything over twelve guests requires a conditional use permit, so we can see if it's a compatible use with the neighborhood. This was determined not to be compatible with this neighborhood. And as far as the rental companies, I think it is incumbent to make sure what built CCNR state and when they were put into place, and if there is an HOA to enforce. Because the statement about legislative intent was that those HOAs form CCNRs after a pre-existing VRBO is in place, and then try and kick the VRBO out. That was my understanding. That was the first legislation that went through, was that you couldn't retroactively impose CCNRs, prohibit short-term rentals. That those CCNRs had to be in place before in order
Yep, but it wasn't back then when they did the CCNRs, that that was considered a commercial use. Not a VRBO. They didn't have the legislation out for VRBO until way later after these CCNRs were built.
Well, we didn't have the ordinance back in the seventies.
No, but they had CCNRs that stated no commercial use in that subdivision, right?
But a short-term rental is considered residential use, right?
Now it is, but back then it was considered a commercial, short-term.
I don't know. I can't say yes or no, because we didn't have an ordinance.
I don't know. I wasn't around back then.
Neither.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify that for the record, that he would be allowed to do a short-term rental with up to twelve guests with an administrative permit. So he is not having
So if he wants thirteen, then he's got to get, or if he wants tents or, you know, our campers out there, he would have to come in and get a conditional use permit from you, from P&amp;Z.
Any of those thirteen tents, campers, anything like that.
Okay. What do you have, anything else?
Just to address the concern about tracking down the other ones that are doing similar large-scale operations that can be commercial uses. Or just ask you, Cindy, have you reached out to any of those?
Yes, we have. The one on Tranquility Lane, which I think done right.
No, I don't. I remember not Tranquility Lane.
You don't have one? Okay, someone told me it was done right.
There were seven that just popped up on that VRBO search.
I haven't actually gone out and tried to track those down yet, to be honest. This summer, I've been focusing on the RVs.
Sure.
But we have sent letters to the one on Tranquility Lane and the one up on Crown Point, the ones that, you know, we wrote our ordinance based upon, and this one. And we have other letters out there. I mean, when we hear about them, we send the letter out, and that will be a winter project.
Anything else? And I'm going to make a motion that we deny the appeal of CUP twenty-two thousand, the gathering place.
I'll second that.
We, no, approve the appeal.
Oh, he's appealing P&amp;Z's decision.
Would you accept the P&amp;Z Commission's fact conclusion decision, and then I'll bring back some conclusions?
Yes, and I want to add maybe a few more. Can we issue a cease and desist on anything over twelve right now?
Finding zoning does not have the authority to do a cease and desist. If he continues to violate the ordinance, then it would be a matter for the prosecuting attorney, either criminally, civilly, which includes a thousand-dollar fine per day, or and/or the imposing of the cloud on his title that we just recently adopted.
So if he continues, then the prosecuting attorney will send him a letter. Can we also stop him advertising as a VRBO over twelve people?
Yes, over twelve people. But he needs to get his short-term rental for the twelve people.
Anything over twelve, he's got to stop advertising for thirty-six or whatever he's doing now. Okay, so I would like to make that a condition. Do you understand? We all good? And you seconded it?
I did second that.
Hey, any more discussion? Like Joe says, you piss off the neighbors, probably not going to work too well. Somebody said that. All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Brent, you've got some work to do. I think you understand the situation. You've got a lot of people that don't want it, so you might want to retake your business model.
And I will bring back conclusions back for your signature later date.
Okay.
Helpfully, around October twenty-sixth.
This public hearing is closed. And we have an action item that we didn't get done today, and that's the letter for ID Department of Land. One of you guys got something already written? What are we going to?
I do not. I'm just, you know, I'm trying to, Dave's really been the one that's been behind this, but I thought we needed to approve you or your spokesperson. Given what that meeting
Sure, and as I say, timewise, I think meeting with the City of McCall would be important. They
They can help write the letter.
Well, they're going to write their own as well. And so I think, like, once we get together and chat with them, we have until the, excuse me, November land board meeting to get these comments into. So that's when they're going to be discussing what their foundation for the McCall area land looks like. So we have up until November, whatever, twenty, if we get those regulations into. I think the more information that we gather
Can you guys step outside, please? Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Yeah, the more information that we can get and more, you know, I think cohesive input on it, I think would be a good time to write that, is after we meet with McCall City.
Now, when do you want to do that?
They just suggested that we throw some dates out at them. Again, like I said, I would like to do that plenty of time prior to that land board meeting in November, so that we could all get our comments in. I was planning on going there in the October meeting. That's not on the agenda for the October meeting, so during the November meeting.
Do you still have city council on Monday nights?
Thursday.
Oh, they're Thursday, yeah.
Maybe we could go earlier, like a five o'clock meeting or something like that, right before their meeting, and still join me.
And Doug, how do we advertise it? Hi, Mary.
Hi.
We'd have to advertise it as a joint meeting in collaboration with the City of McCall. This is unusual. I've never, in my seven years as a clerk, never had a joint meeting with the city. So it would be coordination with the city clerk, my office, their council, the commissioners, just to select a date. And then we would agenda that as a joint meeting. I'm assuming that you guys would want to do that, probably on the north end of the county.
Everybody's up there but me, pretty much.
So we would just need a date?
Yeah, as I say, so the idea, I guess, in my mind would be is, I can get in touch with Annette and talk to her about some dates that would work for us. The, probably the thing that we need to do going into that is come up with a list of outcomes, ideal outcomes. You know, what questions we're trying to answer, what, you know, message are we trying to convey? So prior to that, and of course, Cindy.
Well, and I just wanted to make sure I got, so this joint meeting, you know, we're still on the COVID. So it's probably going to look just like the meetings you've been having over the design guidelines and things. It's going to be Zoom.
I think if we go to the commons, we could get in, you know, I mean, not high school. We could get in at least fifty people.
Well, that would be one of the Yeah, one of the questions is, what would the venue be? Because it's obviously not going to be a beach hall.
This would be a better, I think, a meeting where we need to meet face-to-face.
Well, and I just wanted to remind you to pick a location, make sure McCall's okay. So just before their city council meeting, I don't know if they would do that.
Yeah, I was thinking like a Thursday afternoon, like at four, three, something like that, we could go up before their city council.
I was going to say, I almost was thinking that this, based on Annette's question, might just be a separate meeting altogether. It's like, maybe it's not a Thursday when we meet with them. And again, I can clarify that with her when I get back in touch with her tomorrow.
Okay, so we'll just wait to hear from you.
So I think, like, the questions that I would say that we need to be cohesive on is, maybe you guys could send a list of, or put together a list of outcomes and practice what we're trying to gain at that meeting. We could discuss that a little bit more, maybe next week.
I kind of wonder if we shouldn't talk with, like, have Roy and Mary and then talk to us, you know?
He's on the schedule for next Monday.
Perfect.
So is Craig Utter from the Land Trust.
So we're going to get some ideas there?
And then I think from those meetings, it will cause some synergy, you know, some synergy to come up with some ideas and things like that, what we can.
Sure.
Cindy had a great idea, I mean, you know, on recreation quarters, if we could figure out how to work our snowmobiling program through all of this.
It's not just snowmobiling, no. It goes way beyond that. It's like I was saying, is there's not, you know, a particular corridor. We're talking about a large tract of land. And there may be, you could IP some spots that are, you know, along the east side of the valley and around the west side of Payette Lake that are recreational corridors, per se, but it's just, you know, getting that access and maintaining it. What does that look like in the future? Management seems to be like the key, is, you know, the land board will consider some different kinds of proposals, but we have to come up with, like, what's the long-term management of that area going to look like?
The other issue that I think we really need to have somebody that's smarter than me dig into is, is, can the land board legally transfer this ground?
No.
I don't think they can.
They can sell it, or they can lease it. It's kind of what it looks like it's coming down to. Foraging, you know?
They can't transfer, or they can't trade.
Well, if we had something that we wanted to trade, we could make a proposal to them to trade it.
Well, not just for us, I mean, anybody.
The Constitution, I thought, limited what they can do with endowed land.
They can't just willy-nilly give them away or sell them or whatever. You got to replace that.
So the attorneys that I spoke with, that are working with them, said that he doesn't ever feel a land swap would work. They can do that, but that doesn't determine highest price that they can actually get at a land auction. So he didn't think they would ever swap it. He felt like they would go to auction and sell off individual parcels, which is horrible for the county and the city. Because then there isn't any agreements as far as those recreation quarters and all of that kind of stuff. Then we're dealing with individual landowners that we have to try and get access to.
And I don't see how they can do that if it's never been developed. Like in the past, they had the ninety-nine-year lease, and they had cabins on that little chunk of ground. I could see that making it easy to do, but to take a bare piece of land and say, okay, we're going to sell this little corner here. That would be really hard.
The moment that they sell that land, if it's a lease, then they can, you know, say, hey, this is the new use. And check me if I'm wrong here, Cindy, but we have no say as to what that land use looks like if it's a lease. If they sell it
Less than legal subdivisions, right?
Right, and if they do sell it, though, then the moment that it becomes private property, then not only do we have a say, but also so does McCall City, because it's now public, or no longer public.
Do you know, is that area in there, in that area?
Fifty-some-odd hundred acres, fifty-two hundred acres.
Just the south end of it, probably.
No, it's all the way around Payette Lake.
Oh.
So there's a big chunk of land. It's like I said, fifty-two hundred acres. It goes all the way around the lake, all the way up to North Beach and beyond. So they have a very interest, a big interest in this as well.
They can only sell
One, you have to change the land use on it, designation, and then you also have to have the ability to put new construction, which they don't have right now.
No, and that would be the stuff we need from McCall, like, can you expand sewer and water out there? No, we can't do that.
That's part of the conversation, for sure.
We can go in and say, we want to not only protect our recreation corridors and access, but we want these other accesses as well, or things like that, where we can come in. Okay, well, you just get with them and let us know what afternoon or something like that, whenever you set it up.
And I do think, like I said, next Monday, we'll have Roy, who's coming in in the morning, and then Craig Utter from the Land Trust is coming in the afternoon. So we'll have a little bit more information. I think they have very different ideas of what the ideal scenario would look like. So it'll be interesting to hear both of them kind of discuss it a little bit more.
I read that law or that legislation this weekend, and they can only sell three hundred and twenty acres at a time, individual parcels, to one, that you cannot buy more than one parcel. So we're going to have, I mean, two to five hundred acres, you got three hundred and twenty acres. We've got a lot of land over there.
I think endowed lands are pretty hard to sell. Okay, anything else for today's agenda? You all good? Then I'm going to adjourn the meeting for all of today.